Call meeting to order, the C.R. Arlington School Committee, Thursday, March 24th, We begin with public participation. Is there anybody on the list for public participation?
[laughing]
Harper!
Did you sign up?
No. Okay. This is one of the things we do at the end of terms is that, and it's sort of sad, that we have to say goodbye to a dear friend. Judd, one of the absolute joys of school committee service was the opportunity to hang out with Arlington's very own Atticus Fitch for two nights every month. There was a time about nine years ago when I was sad, when I said that doing two good terms on the school committee was an admirable goal in itself. Judd, you have had two terms that were more than just good, but Judd, it's certainly not enough. I was hoping for an encore. Maybe one of the remaining members will aspire to the dark side, take a seat on the selectments chambers, and offer you the spectacular opportunity to fill an unexpired term. But we all understand there are only so many hours in the day, so many home games in a Red Sox season, so many minutes to spend with your family and your beloved dog. Squeezing in school committee with your other passion as a thespian would require us to convert our clocks to some sort of extended metric time. I see the joy that theater brings to you along with the laughter and applause that never comes at a Policies and Procedures Subcommittee meeting, and I know the joy and laughs you'll bring to folks on the other stage are really important. It's been fun seeing you perform as an actor. You are truly a master of comedic, neurotic roles that are heightened by the deep reservoir of anxiety that comes with serving two terms on the school committee. How could I ever thank you, my friend?
Uh-oh.
I couldn't afford an early entrios, those paintings from the 70s. When last I heard, we're going for around $200,000, even more. But he's going through a similar phase right now. The lines are a little bit wider.
[laughing]
But they almost have the same subtle appeal. You still won't get the resonance at this moment. You won't truly appreciate it until the middle of the day. The resonance you get from something monochromatic, it doesn't really happen under artificial light. Not that it's actually monochromatic. And the school committee will be a little more monochromatic after you're gone. Thank you, my friend. [applause]
I can totally see some red in it. How about you?
[inaudible]
Well, Judd can later.
If you haven't seen the play.
And I know that the remaining members would, I'm sure, have something to say to you as well. So why don't I go around, starting at Bill?
This may be very, very surprising. I have few words to say.
No problem. Thank you.
Very few of you know that Judd has been a controlling influence on me. I would get all excited, which you've all seen. He'd calm me down just by listening. He's one of the best listeners I've ever experienced. Very rare in a younger person. Usually happens in old people because we don't, we keep forgetting what we want to say. Judd, you've been very good to me, very good for me, and whether the committee realizes, very good for them too, because a lot of the things that I wanted to say didn't get said because of you bringing reality to me and common sense. And the other thing, you were so kind to the old man, you always laughed at my jokes, even when they were bad. I appreciate it. I will truly miss you. God luck. Good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Kirsty.
Dr. Judd, I'm doing this without notes.
Oh, wow.
When Paul talked about starting the meeting and having something for you, he made an illusion that I'm, you're my committee husband because we've been on the same cycle. I was thinking about that, and I don't agree. I think you're more like my twin. And I don't know, most, several of you weren't on the committee then, but Judd and I made it through, I think, our first two years of service, having coordinating outfits for every meeting, or almost every meeting. And we never talked outside of meetings. It doesn't happen.
It was really weird for a while. It was like, no, it's not happening much anymore. A little maybe.
Yeah, a little bit. But no, it kind of faded away, but, but yeah. So, and I felt like for the first two years and beyond that, that we were working together, we were lost at the same points, we were confused at the same points, and sometimes we had laughs at the same points. But, and that's when I'm going to miss the most. I appreciate everything you've done for policy and for the committee, but I'm going to miss your laugh, I'm going to miss your smile. So, bye.
Thank you so much. Cindy.
Judd. It has been so great to serve with you and get to know you these past six years. It truly is. And I'm sad that you're leaving us. I feel that your passion and your excitement has been infectious. You imbue all of us with just this wonderful passion of things. You have such a passionate heart and soul, and I'm envious of you going off to follow one of those passions and plan to follow in your footsteps someday, not in theater, but you know, every one of us has something else and, and you know, it makes me think, hmm, wow, what would I do? You know, so it keeps me thinking. I really hope that you'll stay in touch. I hope you'll keep letting us know when we can see you and where we can see you. And as we said before the meeting, I really hope that you'll come back, talk to us about things. You're still a parent, you're still in the schools. You know, we look forward to having you on the other side, and we'll miss you, miss you terribly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeff.
I think you and I always match. I mean, I always were. But I want to-
Probably from another mother.
That's right. But I want to say that when Judd and Kirsty got elected six years ago, the committee was in a very different place. And because of both of you, because of Judd's temperament and focus on kids and focus on teaching and learning, the committee's culture shifted in a very positive way for teaching and learning in the district and for the committee as a whole. I think we are, we're better perceived by people than we were six years ago, and that's due to the way you served on the committee, the compassion you had for kids. I loved the way you were chair. You always began every meeting with something very thoughtful, and I think about it on the way home. What, what did he mean? Why did he pick that? Was it directed at me? Was it something I said? It might have been. So, and I really, I'm looking forward to following your theater career. Christine and I want to go to more performances by Judd and Pierce all over New England. And we'll see each other and see our kids in-
Onstage.
Onstage, in different places as well. So we'll miss you. It has been an honor serving you. You've been a great colleague, great friend, great member of the school committee, and the town's been lucky to have you in that seat.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer.
Well, six years ago, some parents were pushing me to run for school committee, and I sat in a few meetings, and I decided, no way. No way.
It wasn't a good time.
And then I was introduced to you as a possible campaign manager, and, which I accepted and completely bungled, but you got elected anyway.
I remember that Starbucks, our blind date on Starbucks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you know, I walked in, wasn't sure if I'd support you, and you seemed passionate and interesting and a different kind of person than the people I'd seen, than the meeting I'd been to when I decided no. And I echo what Jeff says. I mean, I, I then decided later that I could run because the culture had changed, and that's very much due to your influence.
Judd, thank you so much, Jen. Dr. Bodie.
Well, I echo all of this. You've just been a wonderful member. I've enjoyed working with you, for you. I think people who are watching have no idea how much time this job takes, and you have thrown yourself into all of the work wholeheartedly and with great detail. When you run a meeting, in a subcommittee meeting, you're so open. And Bill mentioned your ability to listen. I found that particularly when you were chair, when we had to talk a lot more, you were always wanting to listen and understand and curious. You exercised the same kind of curiosity we all want our students to have, as well as our educators, as they, they try to learn more and understand and be able to see how everything connects. And it's, it's a complex job that you've had here on the school committee, but you've done it so well, and it's been, it's been such a, really, a pleasure to, to work with you, and we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? On behalf of the town of Arlington, which is, I know everyone in this town is grateful for your service, we have a parting gift beyond the entrios. We have a commemorative chair that commemorates your six years of service on the Arlington School Committee. I hope it has a more honored place in your home and your heart than the entrios, because it deserves it. And we'll take some time, we'll take a break from this meeting to celebrate with some cake and some conversations and just to celebrate your service to the community. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. [applause]
Yeah, I just prepared something, very short. Six years ago, school committee looked very different than it does today. Meeting documents arrived at our front doors the week of our meeting. We met from 7:30 until many times past 11 o'clock, and Jeff, Cindy, and Kirsty were here, and Bill, Paul, and Jennifer were yet to arrive, although Paul was doing his second turn. There were different colored documents all over the desk, many of them we saw just kind of that night. We had the task of cutting into programs that we didn't want to eliminate. The budget was not our friend, but rather a lurking cold and heartless beast awaiting our attention every year, and we experienced some turmoil. A year later, thanks to the generosity of this town, through the amazing Bridge the Gap campaign, and through our town's override of Proposition Two and a Half, the schools were able to add back, and it was like water for a strong thirst. Programs thrived, additional hardworking educators and administrators were hired. Our chief financial officer, Ms. Johnson, brought a modernization of our books, accounting and business practices. New counsel arrived to help us get through contract negotiations and other legal matters. Robert Spiegel came on board to help us manage our human resources and affairs. Dr. Chesson came here and brought an energetic and experienced approach to curriculum and instruction as our assistant superintendent. And Allison Elmer, we found you, luckily, and she became our permanent director of special education. And we saw spirit and morale come back to the Arlington Public Schools, and we have been fortunate, very fortunate, to have a steady and consistent hand as the leader of this district in Dr. Bodie, and I'd like to thank you for all the work you've done here. I chose to run for reelection in the middle of this reinvigorated time. It was an easy decision for me, as there was more work I wished to accomplish. I wanted to help as much as I could with the opening of the new Thompson School, work on redistricting with my colleagues, and always look to revise and prove upon, update, and eliminate some of our policies. And thank you for allowing me to chair the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee pretty much my entire run here, that I wasn't chair. My legal training helped me, I think, work out some of the problems and through the contract negotiations, and my love for the arts always have served me well to advocate strongly for those. I want the public to know that this committee works very hard, not just on every other Thursday night, but on evenings during the week, Saturday mornings. We did the self-governance project with Nancy Walzer, and you'll be seeing her again next month. We created a tablet of standards and norms, which we sign every year to sort of justify what we're doing here. And we worked tirelessly in setting district goals, and that were smart, and overarching goals that were a showcase of our collective vision and hopes and dreams for everyone to see. We assembled alongside the AEA. Thank you, Siobhan, for all your work, and Linda, for IBB training. Many hours of that helped us get to a new teacher's contract with many improvements for both sides. And now today, well, I think this is my kind of pre-Sergeant Pepper's moment. The Beatles needed to do their own thing for a bit before they could come together again and produce what was one of the most musically fascinating albums ever. And so deciding not to run this year was easy for me. It wasn't. It was born of pressures, of being a partner in a small law firm 20 miles away, time to accomplish some personal goals, like running a marathon in November. But most especially, it was my love for my family, who are here tonight. And as you all know, there are many nights that we don't get to help with homework, or sit down and have dinner with our families, or drive to and from practice, or just tuck them in at night. So on all those nights, I didn't say, "Good night, and I love you." Good night, I love you. I want to be sure to tell you all how much I love them and depend on them. And thank you, Laura, Ben, and Harper, for being there and supporting me and my work through these six years on the committee. So thank you so much, guys. And, folks, this is not a soft and fuzzy school committee. Not that there's anything wrong with soft and fuzzy. Instead, we took very seriously our charge as fiduciaries and partners for the public trust. We've worked and become more transparent. We saw our share of disputes, hard times, equally hard decisions. Our children worked hard, so we stayed late. All the while, it was my hope to engage the public and to seek out consensus and compromise between our constituents, the town, the schools, and each other. So I'm leaving now a school committee that is highly functioning, professional, and open-minded to new ideas. Folks, friends, colleagues, never get down. If you do, get right back up, and know that there are so many in this town who are wishing to help with any research you might need on an issue, or help with writing, or fundraising. On the topic of fundraising, thank you, Arlington Education Foundation, for all you're doing for this town. And I'm going to continue my public service in Arlington. I have to. I hope in the near future I will see all of you on the other side of Mass Ave, hopefully first as a town meeting member in my precinct, at 11, and work once again with all of you at a town meeting convening in a month. I love the people in our town so much, and public service is the least I can do to show my appreciation for it. And thank you all very much for your continued hard work for our schools. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
We're in recess for cake.
Recession for cake.
Well, now that we're on a sugar high, when you're on the school committee and you have these early starts at 6:30, this is dinner. I want to welcome Olivia Sonson. She is the Student Council Vice President and President of the Arlington Youth Health and Safety Coalition. I hope you enjoyed the healthy cake. It was healthy, right?
She only had grapes.
Totally.
The kids these days.
Aye.
No, it's true.
And AEA Vice President, Siobhan Foley, who is a third-grade teacher at the Thompson?
Correct.
Oh, I got that right.
Yes.
And, you know, third grade is wonderful. I used to teach third grade once upon a time, it was so much fun. Who is our AEA rep at the meeting here tonight. Welcome to everyone. We do have artwork. And somewheres, we start, I think we start over here and work our way around. This is all from Bishop, I believe.
And Hardy.
Oh, Bishop and Hardy. Okay, yeah, it's a big sign there, Bishop and Hardy. Grade four is Chinese paper cuts. The fourth-grade students invented their own unique Chinese paper cuts using colored construction paper. First, the students observed and discussed paper cuts by various Chinese artists. Chinese paper cutting is considered to be an ancient folk art and has been around since the second century. Paper cuts are often considered to represent good luck and happiness, and are usually hung on doors and windows during special occasions. Then we go to grade five, the Tiffany stained glass. The fifth-grade students created their own designs in stained glass windows, inspired by the stained glass windows of Cambridge, Massachusetts artist Daniel Marr and the famous artist Louis Tiffany. Daniel Marr uses interesting materials and techniques to create his windows, such as the glass bottoms of bottles, and printing photographs onto glass. Louis Tiffany is well-known for his Art Nouveau style windows and stained glass lamps. Grade one in the back, abstract collage. The first-grade students created mixed-media abstract collages, inspired by various artists, including Miriam Coaltess, a contemporary artist from Washington, D.C. Cattellus works in various media and creates beautiful abstract collages using maps, newspapers, patterned papers, and paint. Then we go over to the third grade, patterned creatures. The third-grade students invented the creatures using black and white patterns to create the illusion of various shades of gray. First, the students observed and discussed etchings by Rembrandt. Rembrandt often used black lines and crosshatching, lines drawn crossing over each other, to create various shades of gray in his work. The students learned other black and white patterns can also create shades of gray, and the closer the patterns were on the paper, the darker the gray. And we have in the far right corner, from me, far left from the audience, Mondrian abstract paintings. The second-grade students created abstract paintings inspired by the artwork of Piet Mondrian, a Dutch painter, born 1872, died 1944. Mondrian was known for his grid-like abstract paintings, where he only used the primary colors, red, yellow, and blue, along with white and black. He took inspiration from his surroundings. One famous painting, Broadway Boogie Woogie, shows an abstraction of all the activity on Broadway in New York City, the cars, the lights, and the buildings. The second graders learned that abstract art isn't just random shapes and lines and colors, but also has meaning for the artist. And of course, I look forward to the next presentation of art that will include the historic view of entrios. Don't hold your breath. Yeah, you know. 7:15, Human Rights Commission. We have, who's reporting out on that? Dr. Seuss.
What about the Seuss shuffler?
Uh, Seuss, she will not be with us tonight.
Oh, okay. So we're not doing that. Okay.
So will we get an update at some point?
Yeah, we'll get an update. She, she told me that the numbers are fluctuating, and she's not comfortable doing a presentation because things are changing right now. So she asked to postpone to a later date.
Oh, good.
Dr. Seuss.
Yes, Mr. Pierce can help me fill in some gaps. Oh, actually, and Mr. Hayner. So we met as a joint committee with the Human Rights Committee to look at the charge that we were potentially giving disparate sentences, suspensions to students of color than to white students, and that we were doing so more so than other towns. We met five times. Dr. Bodie and the administration presented a bunch of information to us, and we poured over details and percentages and numbers. And we also looked at the issue of the group homes in Arlington, which potentially we've decided contributes to the disparate suspension rates. And we sort of got an update of some, a successful program that's happened that's caught those rates of suspensions. And in the end, decided that while Arlington is like many communities in that this is potentially a problem that we have to constantly be aware of, that it, in the end, it didn't look like we were worse than other communities, but that it was, it was nevertheless something that we should be thoughtful of and be concerned about and pay attention to. And I, and I think we felt that the administration was doing that.
Mr. Hayner.
I just want to add that Dr. Bodie and the staff here have put, implemented a program, and I want to use the correct terms, that supports and educates students, the students that you mentioned, it's sort of like, and I don't know if it's appropriate, correct me if I'm wrong, a halfway or an integration of students. They're not being put, plunged right from the group home into a classroom.
Transition.
And there is an evaluation process that's involved, and when they're ready, it goes in, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's reduced the issue of suspension dramatically. And I'm looking forward, I think that is part of the solution, that good solution that was implemented to deal with the issue that was brought forward.
The, I'm told that the Arlington Human Rights Commission has voted to disband this joint committee. We need to do so, so I'd like to see a motion to disband the joint subcommittee. So moved by Mr. Pierce, second by Dr. Seuss. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Can I just, can someone recap for me? I know that we did this because there were allegations of disproportionate things. Did that charge go to any higher level, or was this the appropriate way to address it? Is there anything else beyond?
That we're, oh, I mean, was there legal action being brought?
Yeah, or, or anything else?
Yeah, to our knowledge, there were some threats of some, but not, nothing went through, to our knowledge.
Okay, so this is, we've addressed the charge, and that's, oh, okay. Sorry, I just didn't know.
Mr. Hayner.
I just want to be clear, I'm not aware of any threats. The town council said, as far as you know, it was, it was, the town took it upon itself, Human Rights Commission and the school committee took it upon, to form the joint committee. I'd just like to add that, and I'll defer to the chair, but we have a report that was presented. Should we, should we not accept that report prior to disbanding the group, or can that be done afterwards?
Is the report, the report in the, yeah.
Yes.
So we can accept that report as well. Would you like to make, I'll withdraw.
I move to-
I'm going to table the mo, motion to table the motion to disband.
So moved.
Dr. Allison Ampe, second by Dr. Seuss. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's tabled. Now, Mr. Hayner.
I move that we accept the report as presented with the committee.
Motion by Mr. Hayner, second by Dr. Seuss. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. I need a motion to take the other motion off the table by Dr. Allison Ampe, second by Ms. Starks. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. All in favor of the motion to disband this joint subcommittee? All say aye? Aye. Opposed? It is disbanded. Thank everybody, both from our side of the street and the Human Rights Commission, for taking a very serious look at this. It's something we're concerned about. We want to maintain equity in the schools. Next, Human Rights Commission Arlington's, no, resolution not to raise the charter school cap. We have before us a motion, a resolution that comes from the Agawam School Committee that they have passed, basically the therefore be it resolved, that the Agawam School Committee opposes any lift of the cap to charter schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And many school committees across the state have been adopting this resolution as well. So do I have a motion to adopt this for Arlington?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Starks, second by Mr. Hayner. Any discussion? Dr. Allison Ampe.
So in reading the resolution, I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's fairly long, but I had some questions about some of the paragraphs. It's, it's in the usual whereas thing. I just, I didn't know where some of the numbers and things they talked about came from, and I didn't have a chance to fact-check everything. The stuff where they talk about findings from auditor bump, those, I checked those, those are all fine, but I just, I'm a little uncomfortable about some of the assertions. I wondered if we could clip some of the paragraphs but still have resolve, I mean-
Well, essentially, essentially, the resolution is the therefore. Well, essentially, the resolution is the therefore be it resolved, that.
So, I don't like, it's the whereases, I mean, some of the whereases that I don't like, but it's the resolution I'm happy with. Does it matter about the whereases, or?
Generally.
Or just the backup.
Whereases or backup. The force of the thing is the therefore.
Okay.
Does this need to be in our name?
Yes, it will be changed.
We changed the Agawam to Arlington and.
The signature lines.
And changed the signature line. That's the way they do it. We'd sign it, and we'd send it off to them. We'd notify MASC that we adopted the resolution.
But will we send it with all the whereases on it?
We could just do the therefore be it resolved, if that's the wish of the committee.
The ones I don't like are the paragraph one, which is about the percents, paragraph two, which is about fewer English language learners.
Those are all true.
Okay, if that.
I know those to be true.
You mean number two?
Yep.
Okay, that's, okay. That's, if you guys can internally check some of them, it was just, they don't have any sites. Paragraph four?
Yep.
About enrollment problems?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay. And then paragraph five?
Yes, that's absolutely true.
Yes, that is also true.
Yep.
Okay, okay, well, if you guys.
I don't know one, but.
Mr. Haner.
Last night, there was a group that met on charter schools, and just about every one of these questions.
Yeah, it was asked and verified, yeah.
I don't want to take anything away from the other members that were there, but I learned an awful lot last night, in fact, and I'd like to give credit to our chair. He did an excellent presentation on the funding, and I think I'm prepared to go out into the masses and go against this just for the things that you presented last night.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I had to arrive late to that same meeting because I was required for quorum at a different meeting. So that's probably part of why I'm behind all of you on these things. So, okay, I withdraw my concerns.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the charter school resolution?
Just a comment, do we then have to rewrite it with our name?
We would just insert Arlington in there.
So we can vote on this now even though it's not.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
With the changes that we need to make.
Yeah, we're substituting Arlington for Agawam.
And Dr. Bodie for.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Haner.
The motion should read, to accept the resolution as presented with the appropriate changes relative to our school committee.
That's a friendly amendment, and I accept it. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous vote, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Well, I suppose I'm taking advantage of the fact that the agenda isn't too extensive tonight. So I actually have a few things to talk with you about. First of all, we're going to have an updated calendar in May, but one change that I think is important to mention now, and it will go out to kindergarten parents in a letter that will be inviting them to their school on May 10. And that is, we've decided since we brought the calendar in January of now doing the annual, the screening of kindergarten students at the end of this school year rather than at the very beginning of the school year. Now, what the effect of that will be is that on the Tuesday after Labor Day, we will have just simply a visit to the school by kindergarten students, and that will, what the nature of that visit will be yet to be described. It will not, it'll be coming with their parents, it'll be a very short visit, but they'll be able to go to school with their brothers and sisters if they, assuming that they have an older sibling going. On Wednesday and on Thursday, we'll divide the class into two parts, so they have a whole day with a smaller group of students so they can learn a little bit more about the routines and the school. And then on Friday of that week, they'll start a full day with their entire class. And we feel that this would be preferable to go back to doing screening in the spring, and this time it will be in June because of the park schedule. But we felt that it would be better in terms of not only looking at what services students might need, but also in developing class lists. So that's a plan, and that will be in the new calendar in May, and it will also be communicated to parents. And speaking of kindergarten, we've had, we're just on the tail end, actually, of our formal registration process. And this year, we instituted a new online registration. And interestingly, when it opened at midnight the first night, I think by 12:15, we had 30 or 40 registrations.
People think they don't have, they're not going to get in?
Well, and that's even with knowing that anything within a certain window of time was still considered stamp date the first date. But people were just anxious to get in there. The vast majority, I think we had over 300 of the registrations online, maybe even more than that now. Even more than that now.
That's great. So what's the number now?
Well.
I know, it's going to go up.
Hold on. Dr. Seuss.
I'm sorry. I was just curious what the number is now, but knowing that it's going to go up.
It would, it is, and it's a little bit higher than it was last year this time. In terms of processed applications, we have slightly over 400, but we also have another roughly 43 or 45 that are in process, and every day, there's more registrations coming in. So we have already a fairly sizable class in its March.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I wanted to ask a question. This isn't so much for Dr. Bodie, but for the committee. I heard from a constituent today that he had heard that the school, he had heard someone say that the school committee believes that it has a handle on kindergarten assignments for this fall, and that with the Thompson addition, there's confidence that class sizes will be kept under control. And.
Who said that?
Well, that's, does anyone, any idea where it came? Okay, so it wasn't any of us?
Nope, nope.
I did have.
Dr. Seuss.
I did have a conversation with a constituent today, and I was saying how good, how we've done really well this year in terms of the kindergarten sizes, that we hadn't seen the high numbers that we'd had in previous years. So we.
So you mean.
Class sizes were much better.
I mean, the class for this year.
So if you look at the kindergarten classes this year, it is much better than it's been in previous years.
Okay, for 15, 16, but we're not talking about 16, 17?
No. Right, right. But we don't know, right?
Okay, so maybe it got past.
We were also talking about this worry that somehow that because of McKibben numbers that there's going to be class sizes of 28 later on, and I was just talking about how you have to look at the kindergarten class sizes, they're not, you know, if the kindergarten class sizes are 22, it's unlikely for them to get to 28 a few years later. And we were just sort of talking about that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Bodie.
Thank you. So as we move forward with registrations, we are going to be moving, and we are there in terms of having an online registration process. Doesn't mean that we're still not making appointments, and people can come in for registration. The other feature we have to this process is that our registrar has made a video, and that video is available to people to describe the registration process. He's made a video to describe how you go into the parent portal to update your demographics. And so we're trying to make this as user-friendly as possible because there's so many more people that just being able to come out in the late afternoon to register is, can be a burden. So, so far, it's going well. In fact, in past years, when we've had opening day of registration, we'd have long lines. This year, I think we had 20 people total. So it was a major, major upgrade. We have sent out, we sent it out last week, a calendar survey, because we've been talking about calendars, and this was the survey that all of you approved for getting input both from teachers and from parents. This survey has already had, for parents, over 700 responses. So it's already been received well. What we do know, though, is we put this survey out through Blackboard Connect, and in fact, I sent out another email today about this, that, we sent it out through the emails that we have in Power School, but we don't have the emails of every student. Now, as we go forward with our registration process, that will change. But in order for us to have emails, parents have to go into the portal and update them. So we've, we sent out all the links for how to do that. The survey is live, but we send you the survey link, and we've already, I think since I sent that email, we have 14, 15 or 16 people who have gone into the portal to change that.
I'm not a parent, so I was not giving, and I still don't have access to the survey, yet I did get that email. Just be prepared for other people that are on the mailing list to respond to you and say, what survey, and things of that nature. I'm just, I understand where it's coming from.
Right. The reason why we send it out through our notification system is that it's just simply to parents. What was, the email that went out today is a subscriber listserv. And so there are a lot of people that are on that listserv.
You just may get people saying, what survey at you? That's all.
That could happen, yes. But hopefully, it was clear that this is for parents to go in and do this. But we'll send it out to them, the link, and it's live until April 4 at midnight, actually 11:59, and, because we have to turn it off at some point. But one of the things that parents can do if they decide there was a comment they want to add, or what ended up happening the first day it was out, is that inadvertently, the teacher survey, which has the same questions, went out. So people didn't have a chance to put in their demographic, but it's, that's all been fixed, and you can go back in and change it, add any information if you want, and whatever your last submission is, is what gets tallied.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I'm being good and waiting. The people who are changing, who realize they don't have an up-to-date email or something in the Power School, if they change it, will they then get sent a link?
Yes.
Later? Okay.
16 just happened late afternoon today.
No, I know they updated their email, but does that mean then they get the survey link sent out?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
That's what, okay, I didn't miss that.
Mike Remy, who monitors it, as soon as it was updated, he then sent out the email to them with the link.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I think we'll get some pretty good data, and we still have another week and a half almost for the information. One of the, had a meeting yesterday, there's an advisory committee for the Stratton project, and it's made up of administrators, teachers, parents. And we have been meeting fairly regularly for the last few months to talk about a lot of the issues that come up, because the architects want to have feedback as you go through the process. And we had one just this week with a modular company as well as the architects, and worked out a number of details that needed to be discussed. But the thing that I wanted the committee to know, because this was different information than what you might have been aware of, the modular company is now going to be on-site in April.
Oh, good.
And Mr. Hannah will be sending that out, and I think probably already has, to the parents of Stratton, and certainly the teachers know. And that is going to affect a lot of, you know, just the routines, in terms of actually how you get out to the playground, and that's going to happen as the equipment starts being brought in. And they're moving it up because, an interesting thing I didn't know, is that when you get close to Memorial Day weekend, on either side of it, there's sometimes restrictions on these really big trucks traveling, and so rather than get caught in not having everything here, they've moved up the schedule.
Mr. Haner.
Does that move up the projected completion schedule?
No. Now, that was a concern for teachers, but what we know is that the completion schedule will be August 22, that Monday, but then that week will be an opportunity to get in and do data stuff and do the moving in, because we're going to have furniture stored during that time from the end of school until they can move in, because the construction project actually begins, and they'll be on-site earlier, too. The construction starts right away. So everything has to be pulled out of classrooms. And so teachers are going through the process right now of having to decide what's going to be stored for the year, and what do they need next year, and then labeling all the furniture. That will all be done. So another point of discussion is storage, because, you know, we're not going to have a lot of storage on-site, but we're looking into different kinds of storage pods for the year.
Mr. Haner.
Melissa, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the Stratton? Nope, go ahead.
Nope, so we're moving ahead, and so teachers will have about two weeks before school starts to set up their classrooms. I want to, sort of a nice thing that I just learned a day or so ago, is that one of our library paraprofessional, Liza Haley, who is the, you know Liza, down at Thompson, who is the paraprofessional librarian at Thompson, who has done, I have to say, an incredible job, because you know we had the books for Bill, and she was very much part of that process in getting the books and bringing the books in, because when she, when she started in the library, there was the books in boxes to set up, and she has set up a very welcoming place for Thompson students. At any rate, we just found out that she is this year's recipient of the Friends Scholarship awarded by the Massachusetts School Library Association. And this scholarship is awarded once a year to a student in school library certification program. So she's going, she is in a program to become a licensed librarian. So congratulations to her.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's great. The, I wanted, at the next meeting, I'm going to bring forward, I just want to give you a notice, we're going to bring forward a candidate to be, for you to meet, who has volunteered to be a member of the Vision 2020 Standing Committee. And the process they have is that the superintendent makes a nomination, you approve the nomination, and then there's the appointment. The Vision 2020 has already put out a, an all-call and advertisement for anybody who would like to be on the committee, and we do have someone. So it'll be at the next meeting that that will, that will happen. I also, this is the end of March, and we've talked about having a update on where we are with district goals, my goals this year, and I thought that I would go through that, because it also relates to, one of them relates very much to the task force. And it may be an opportunity for people that are on the task force also to talk about where we are in that process. Because of the two goals that I specifically pointed out for this year, well, is close the achievement gap. That's really not something we're going to really talk about in terms of data. But what I will say about that is that, you know, if you, unless you change what you're doing or expand what you're doing, you're going to potentially not get the kind of change you'd like to see. And some of the changes that we have done this year, and I think it's actually quite significant, is not that we haven't been having data meetings, we have this, and you've heard about how we've had to have traveling subs to be able to do that. This year, with the new elementary schedule, we have, every Tuesday, we have common planning, and of course, oftentimes, that can happen, data, looking at data in those meetings, but we have a very formal time that's set aside in those afternoons to looking at data. And we're looking specifically at a lot of our students that are struggling and looking at what we can do to help them. We also, this year, were very fortunate to get some additional Title I money, which has provided extra tutoring interventions at both, at all of our Title I schools, at Thompson, Hardy, and Pierce. So that's been, that's been something that we'd love to have done more of, but it's terrific that we can do it. So there is, there's a lot going on in that, and of course, we'll just see, as we move into. we move into the, into Park. And I don't know if later you want to have any questions about where we are on the Park implementation, but, yeah.
Well, Mr. Hayner.
I don't want to take away from the time for your report. I think that might take a little bit more.
Do it at the next meeting?
I, I would prefer that, and, and, give us a little heads-up of direction so we can prepare ourselves for you.
I, I would like to have something in writing before we talk about it, so if we could get a, you know, a summary report in the agenda, so we'd have a foundation for asking questions.
All right, just my note here, okay. So the other goal is develop a plan to address base needs related to, to, to anticipated enrollment growth over the next 10 years. I don't think there's anything that's occupied more of my time this year than this particular one, including, you know, all of the, the issues around enrollment, the different plans. We're, we're dealing with a very complex situation in terms of all of the moving parts around, around this issue. The task force has been meeting, and where we are presently with that is that we have a meeting next week, it's going to be on Tuesday. The time has changed, however, to six o'clock, and it'll be in this room. At that time, this task force is going to be giving it an, an interim report by HMFA Architectural Firm that has, that is conducting a more in-depth study of the, of the cost of renovation. At Gibbs is one part of the study, and the other one is the feasibility and cost of doing an addition at Odison in one of two school-owned, school-owned properties, which is really the back parking lot, which is really the front of the school, and the soccer field behind the school on the Mass Ave site. And so both of those are going on simultaneously. Today, architects, the architect, structural engineer, mechanical engineers, cost estimator were at Gibbs doing a, doing a tour. So I think we'll have some, we're certainly going to have an interim report on Tuesday.
So it's next Tuesday, March 29th, 6:00 PM in this room.
Yep. And I, I, I don't, I'm wondering whether you want to have a more in-depth discussion, maybe not tonight, about the complexities of all that we are facing with respect to, respect to this, in terms of potential overrides, what are the options, and so forth. That might be something we want to have down the road.
We, we should be getting a report back from the School Enrollment Task Force. There's going to be another long-range planning meeting in the interim, so I think that by receiving the reports back from those two groups, we'll, we'll have plenty to talk about. So we should probably have that on the agenda. Dr. Seuss.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I, I just want to say that people are so, are all over the place and it's on us, and that it, it might be confusing to present something as
Complex.
A plan, when we really have no idea at this point, I think.
We don't have a plan right now.
In terms of the funding mechanism, no, there's not a plan yet, but, but people are working very hard, and I suspect there will be very soon.
I think we're, there'll be something to talk about by the time we meet next. Ms. Starks.
I just, I wanted to bring up something about the School Enrollment Task Force. I don't know if this is the right time or the subcommittee reports out.
Do it either way.
Given that we're talking about it.
Talking about it now.
So I, I'm concerned because the timeline is so short that we, as a school committee who are tasked with the decision if and when we decide to go with the Gibbs, that we have not started on trying to at least make a list of the things that we need to know in order to decide if we're going to do one grade or three grades at the Gibbs. And I think that that work can be done simultaneously. It can be done now in the background. We can assign that work to a subcommittee, even though I know we only have two weeks left of this group filling that subcommittee. But I feel a real sense of urgency to do what we can, when we can, as soon as we can, so that they're never waiting on us. And I know that that's a decision that we have to make if and when they make the Gibbs decision. And I know that if, if the decision is to go with Odison, that that work may not get used, but I think in preparation, I would really like to know that, that there is, that there is a subcommittee who is going to help drive the thought process that we're going to, of gathering the data, at least helping make the list of things that we want to see so that we can make that decision.
Mr. Hayner.
I'd be willing to serve.
Well, I think, I think
Before we mention who's willing to serve, I think we should send it to one of the subcommittees, and I think the CIA would be the logical one. So if Ms. Starks is making that motion.
I would like to make that motion. I move to direct CIAA to start the process of coming up with the information, the list of information, the questions that we want to have answered, so that we can understand better whether we should go with one grade or three grades.
Seconded by Dr. Seuss. Any que, Dr. Allison Ampe.
I was going to second, because I wanted to enthusiastically second the idea. No, because I think it's important. It's not just so that we're, the decision-making is not held up by us, but also so that we have the longest possible time to vet the ideas and think, you know, because we want to be looking what the educational advantages are, we want to look at the logistical differences, and we want to be doing it in as wide a time span as possible, instead of having this crunched-up thing.
Mr. Thielman.
The, okay, so, so basically it's a, it's an evaluation of whether the, the Gibbs should be a sixth grade or should be sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Right.
Basically, it's side-by-side comparison. Yeah. Refresh my memory, who's on the committee going into, in ten days?
Right now?
No, no, I know who's on the committee now. Who's in the committee?
We don't know yet.
Judd, Cindy, and I are for the moment, but in I know, I know, so, so do you?
We should meet in the next, like, two weeks and start, at least start a list.
Actually, what happens in between the election and the first meeting?
Yeah.
Is there, are
Nothing.
We're, we're not reorganized yet, so we still exist in our
Up until then.
Yeah, up until then. The current subcommittee can meet until the new subcommittee is charged. And, and I'm sure that after the election, you'll be able to publish a, a list of what your thoughts are. Mr. Hayner.
Just for my clarification, I thought the motion was to, for CIA to make up a list of questions for the committee to consider. And I thought Mr. Thielman said a side-by-side evaluation of the two, two programs.
Yes, we want to make a list of all the things we want to see, side-by-side, for the differences of sixth or sixth, seventh.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Seuss.
So I just wanted to say to, actually to the audience at home, I know that some of this work is being done with the teachers, which is great and laudable, and I know that there's some outreach and discussion among teachers, and potential to visit Needham, I've heard. So I enthusiastically second the idea of the school committee doing some of this work in parallel. We also have at some point to reach out to the larger community, and that's a very important, very necessary step. It felt premature at this stage, but, but we recognize that that is, has to happen and will happen.
Mr. Thielman.
So when, when does the committee have to take a decision on whether, when does the committee have to take a vote on the, on the educational design of the, of the Gibbs?
Well, first step is that the task force has to make a recommendation as to whether they think that we should go with having Gibbs be a school, or whether we should add it in addition. Now then, once that recommendation is there, then the issue is going to be, well, should it be a single grade or should it be a six through eight? One of the, one of the things we know is that whatever the, whatever project it's going to be, it's going to require debt exclusion override. And I think that people would probably agree, they would prefer to know which it is prior to that, that override. Now, at the moment, there's no set date. It could be in June, or it could wait to the fall. So if it's in June, and I don't know when that, that is going to be decided, there, there is some urgency to start moving this process along, which we have started to do on, on the, the school side. But if it's in the fall, it's, there's still some argument for moving forward with this thinking, because a decision needs to probably be made. My suggestion is that you come to a conclusion this year, this school year, probably in June. If we don't, if we have the override in June, then you probably need to make a decision in May.
So the, yeah, I mean, I think, okay, so I'll try to get the committee to meet in the next 10 days. I'll try, I'll put out a doodle and see if we can get a meeting. And then the new committee will have to
We'll have something to hand over.
Yeah, hands it over. But I also think, you know, this is, to do this right, this is done, I don't think it's a separate, I don't think it's a parallel exercise, I think it's done in conjunction with the school administration. Otherwise, it doesn't really have much value.
Oh, absolutely.
So I think it's a question of setting a meeting, having you there.
Of course.
And the principal, and the assistant superintendent, and talking about the research and the thinking you've done so far, where that's at. And then trying to figure out how we're going to, the data and the information and the questions that need to be answered to answer, to decide which is the best educational decision for the town. So, and then one, the one question, the one thing I'm curious about is have you, have you not, you had, you did that sixth grade, that report on, on the challenges of, of
K-6.
Yeah, right, the K-6 model. So that gives us a lot of information to start with, I think. Is there any data analysis that you've done of, of like, growth scores at, at, like, in the Needham School or anything like that? Have you done any of that sort of thing?
I've looked at their scores. Don't have done anything more than that, analysis, I mean, analysis of when they moved
Yeah.
Into that. Well, this is their eighth year.
Yeah.
So SGP's is a more recent phenomenon, so there's no way that compared to baseline.
There's no way you don't have that data, yeah, okay. All right, well
They do very well.
Yeah, I know they do.
They do very well.
I know that, I know they do. All right, well, we'll, we'll try to get the committee to meet in the next 10 days.
Thank you. Are we going to, do we need to vote?
I think so.
Well, we do need to vote. There's a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote, thank you. Oh, yeah. Where, where are we?
I don't know, but Kirsty's got her hand up.
Oh, okay.
I had two things also on this same topic. Should I bring them up now?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so the first one is an idea that I wanted to throw out there for the School Enrollment Task Force people to think about, which is if we end up going with using the Gibbs as a school, would it be possible to place modulators on this, on the school property, either on the side of the street or on the basketball court, and have them to house the tenants who are currently there? So I'm thinking the Keeler Her program and part of the ACA or the preschool. And I'm suggesting this because it's something that we own the space for. We could potentially privately fund the modulators. There is, when I've looked at it from above, there is space definitely along that, I can't remember the name of the street, the one the parking lot comes off of. There is space there. Doing a second wing next to the other building. And it make, it, it gives a solution for some of the problems of displacing the tenants. So I just thought it, it was worth throwing out into the mix.
Mr. Hayner.
Adam Chapdellane has received a, a lot of suggestions from different people, things like that. And I apologize if this comes off offensive, I don't mean it. My understanding of the task force is to focus on the enrollment issues itself and the solution in that, and that focus there. There are outside areas and things of this nature. I would recommend that you pass that on to the, the town manager, because he has taken it upon himself to look for solutions.
That's what she's asking us to do.
I'll send it, I'll send it to him.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, my feeling as a member of the task force, that's not our purview. The individual taxpayers and stuff go to the town manager independent of the task force, that's all I'm saying.
I'll send it to him.
I'm sure he's heard it now.
Well, I would send it to him anyway.
I don't think he stays up and watches that.
I know, you, you don't, you don't know if they're going to need that space for staging for construction, if that's what we're doing, but certainly an interesting question to ask.
It's, it's another idea
We should, we should ask every question we can.
Yep, absolutely.
That's what we've been doing all along.
You know, it's doable, and we control the space, so I thought it was worth throwing out there. Okay, so that was the first thing. The second thing is that I've been listening to discussions at the BR, Budget Revenue, BRTF meeting that we had on Fri, on Monday, and I happened to sit next to Mr. Cole, who very kindly answered my question before I had a chance to ask it, which was, isn't there something we can do to speed up the timeline on the Gibbs? My concern is that with discussions of having overrides potentially, or debt exclusions potentially going into the fall or later, that that pushes, the study starts from the spring to the fall, and that all of that ends up rolling into a, a delayed start date or opening date of the school from September 18 to September 19. I think that is not good for several reasons. One, it wastes money, because we're going to end up having to have modulators at the Odison. Two, I think the Odison is not a ideal site. Not ideal is putting it incredibly mildly. I think it's really a difficult site to put modulators and have that be a functional school. Anyway, I would really like to see us push towards having, working towards the goal of September 18 being our site. And as such, I think we need to look for the money to do the study, potentially, not all of us, but could we get some of it from us, maybe some of it from, from capital planning, maybe some of it from the finance committee, split it somehow so that we have it, so we can start the study, you know, assuming this, again, you know, understanding, we don't know which road we're going, but if we go down that road, I think we need to find that money, and we need to get the start, study started as quickly as possible. And I think we, as a school committee, need to have this on our minds, and as soon as we convene, assuming I'm back here again, I think we need to be taking this up, and really, we need to be talking to our partners across the town and seeing what we can do. Maybe there's some way that we can work out a deal where if we front some of the money, then if it turns out we don't need the modulators later, they can pay us, you know, it could come back to us, because we've saved that money on the other end. I don't know, but I think we should start having these talks. Not totally sure who should be having them, but I, I know it's a tight schedule, but sometime, I think this is where we, as a town, and even though we have a lot of people, we're kind of a small town in terms of how we function. We function really tightly, we can move when we really want to move. We did an override in ungodly short amounts of time, and it passed. I think we could make the Gibbs remodel happen if we need to, but the first key point is getting that money so that the design gets started on time, or else we're really in trouble. So, sorry.
So are you asking for the committee to communicate to the, to the appropriate folks on the other side?
I was more saying this because we can't discuss this except in open meeting, and I wanted you all to hear what I had to say. Partly, I might not be at this table with you in another one. But
You will be.
I think it's something all of us should be taking up. I'm not sure who the specific tasks should go to, but I think we should all have it on our minds, and I think we should be doing whatever we can.
Mr. Thielman.
So it would take and allocate, it's, it's a sizable amount of money. It's about three-quarters of a million dollars to do it.
Much more.
Is it much more than?
Yes. May I?
Go ahead, superintendent.
The, we don't know what the cost of renovation is, but let's say hypothetically it's 15 million, all right? Generally speaking, your designer costs are 20% of the cost. We're fronting right now the Thompson design, and we're using the estimates that were about 2.5 million dollars. So we're, we're fronting right now about 250,000 in order to get the design study for Thompson, which is a sizable amount of money. In addition to the school department In addition to, the school department with the finance committee is working on the money to actually do this study. So the, so the school department is, is doing twenty-five thousand there, so we're, we have been doing this, but it's really a lot of money to do the design on Gibbs, or the design on the addition either.
Okay.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
So not too, well, I guess I, I am contradicting you because twenty percent of fifteen million works out to three million. The numbers that we're talking about for the high school are only in the one point five million, so I'm having a hard time believing that it would be that much. The numbers that Mr. Cole had were around seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that's the number that I was thinking about. So I'm not...
Dr. Seuss.
Oh, just, I, I think that potentially we're gonna have a lot more clarity in, in a week or two. I think this issue is on many people's minds, and there have been sort of conversations, and hopefully at the long range planning committee, there'll be more. So I think you're not alone, is what I'm getting the sense when I talk to people informally, that, in, in wanting to find a solution. So, but I, I, I also suspect that it'd be hard to take it from school, from school administration, you know, reserves, but, but, but that there, but there are other ways, I mean, there's bans and there's all sorts of other ways to do things, it just, they're risky, but they're doable.
I mean, I mean, the question is this, is that, does the committee want to, you know, I, I stated it at the long range planning meeting, I know you did as well, but we're speaking as one person, one person in the room. Does the committee itself want to say, to express a sense of urgency for the reasons you stated, to have a, a facility open for these students in September two thousand eighteen? That's the question. And if you're nodding your head, Mr. Pierce, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move for us to, well, it's...
Consensus?
For, for consensus on that?
You can have a sense of the committee or...
Just a, yeah, straw vote.
What are we voting on?
Yeah.
Well, that's the question, is that we, it's a sense of the committee that we desire, that we do everything possible to ensure that it, that expanded middle school facilities be open for September two thousand eighteen.
Let's say so move.
So move.
Second.
Does the secretary have that language? Because I don't.
Move to get a consensus on that, just to move for the school committee to get a consensus of the desire to do everything possible to ensure a middle school to be open for September two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Heiner.
I just add, an adequate middle school for the population that we have at that point.
Well, obviously, that's what we're pushing for, I think, I think we're saying...
If it's understood in the motion, that's fine.
The motion is to express our sense of urgency for a timeline and a completion date of September two thousand eighteen. Any discussion? Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, I, I don't think I'd vote for that motion, to be honest, because though I feel a sense of urgency, have a sense of urgency, there's also the issue about getting things right, and I know that speed can often be at the expense of getting things right, and ultimately, I think that's more important. It may not be at the expense, I would say, yes, a sense of urgency with the caveat that we make sure that everything is, you know, done, done well, but that's an important caveat, so.
Mr. Heiner.
I, I agree with everything you've said, but I think the enrollment task force committee was set up just for that, that with the excitement and going forward with the members from the school committee, the brakes were put on very quickly, the first couple of meetings by other members of the committee, basically saying just what you said. It's my interpretation from the other night at the budget meeting, several members from the enrollment task force were there, some of those breaking, breaking people felt this urgency as well, but with also the issue of going forward with doing it correctly. So I, I think by voting for an urgency doesn't mean we're not going to take the time to do it. The, it, it said, if it, basically, we're not saying do it, we're saying do the best you can to get there as a goal. It may not be achievable in order to make sure that everything is done correct.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Okay, I'll vote for this motion because I'm not, I'm asking us to push for urgency, I'm not looking for shortcuts. But if we do not, the bottom line is, the timeline that we're talking about, if we do not act with a sense of urgency, it will not happen. So it is basically, we have to be, we have to move that fast, not taking shortcuts, doing everything we need to do, but we have to move fast, or it will not happen, so.
Mr. Thielman.
So I think the reality is this, is, you know, if we don't take a spring vote, if there's not a debt exclusion vote in the spring, then you run the risk of a, of not opening by eighteen, that's, that's the reality. So, but, so I'm gonna vote for the motion because I think it's just, it's a, it's a resolution that says we all want the school to open in two thousand eighteen. I just, I don't, I just don't know how the process is gonna play itself out. I, I think that the cost of a design is, I don't know what the right number, I mean, the superintendent said it's twenty percent, so I mean, I've got no reason to question that. I, I'm not sure we can, we can't fund the design without a debt exclusion. Okay, we can't, there's no, we don't have the funds in the town budget to do it without a debt exclusion. Now, we could borrow the money, I guess, and then pay it back once the debt exclusion is passed, but we don't have the funds to do that debt exclusion. I think, I think the school committee, the school enrollment task force, the message to the school enrollment task force members who are, who are members of the school committee is very clear, I think I'm hearing loud and clear, push, push, push for two thousand eighteen. At the same time, I just think we need to keep our feet on the ground, that, you know, there's a debt exclusion has to occur, there's a design that has to occur, and there's lots of unknowns in the construction of a facility that's as old as the Odison.
You mean the Gibbs?
The Gibbs, and, yeah, right. The Gibbs, thank you, Kirsty, yeah, right, right, right.
Interesting vintage, too. Ms. Starks, is that your hand up, or are you just...
Nope, I was just saying the Gibbs.
I, I share your sense of urgency, Dr. Allison Ampe. Anytime somebody says, well, let's wait and see, I, I get very nervous, I, I don't wanna wait and see. I think that we've spent a lot of time discussing this, we've been discussing this for the full year, all the options have been thrown out to the public, we've solicited a, a boatload of opinions on where we go, it's now down to two choices, I think that the, the eventual choice will emerge within a week or two, when, when the report comes out from the architects, whatever that might be. And once we're there, I think we should pick this up and work as diligently as we can to push it forward. If we can't make it by eighteen, then we can't do it, but I don't think we should be taking a wait and see approach, or just doing this at a leisurely pace. Once we make the decision, we stand by it, we come together, we make all the arguments, we develop the long range plan to explain what we're doing here to the voters, because they're talking about doing two different overrides. The political people, the selectmen will make the override decision, the people from multiple boards will be making decisions in terms of timeline and strategy, but I think that from our point of view, where we are as a school committee, we've got a huge problem, we need that space, we need that space as soon as we can, and that's why I think that this is an excellent motion, and I'm thankful to Dr. Allison Ampe bringing this up. Mr. Thielman.
Yeah, one question, so Paul said we're gonna get a report in a week, when, when's the report coming?
We're gonna get...
An interim.
Well, it's an interim report, it's not the complete report, it's just basically where they are in it. May I just...
Go ahead.
It's not on the motion, I, I do share a sense of urgency to have some resolution to where we need to go, but I just wanna clarify, there's a difference between a feasibility and a designer study. The designer study that we're gonna do for Thompson means that we could actually go into bidding for construction. It's a very detailed, the feasibility is a very different kind of study. And generally, this is just a little thumb that I, I've learned a lot about this, and I'm not saying this, this is what I've been told, that it roughly, the designer costs are roughly twenty percent of the cost of a project, in order to get all the drawings and, and the plans ready. And in order for, let's say if the override was deferred until the fall, you, you, you need to have at least three or four months to do those, so you'd have to have the money this spring in order to have it, and, and then hope that the override passes.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I was going on the numbers that Mr. Cole had next to me, so I was going from those which... He had seven hundred...
Well, you know, our point here is we're not debating the numbers right now, and we're, we're not in the construction business, we're in the education business, we're stating our needs, and, and at that point now, how much it's gonna cost, I don't know, how we finance it, I don't know, I don't do municipal finance, I do education, I think that's what we're here to do, and that's why I think that the limit of this, we're not identifying money, we're not saying, you know, how to do it, we're just saying, this is what we need, and we need it badly.
We need space by two thousand eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, yeah.
That's what you're saying, yeah, that's the...
And, and the parking, and, and we know the parking modulars at the Odison's a really bad idea, that should be avoided, if at all possible. Anyone, any other discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a unanimous vote. Or abstain, Dr. Seuss abstains. Superintendent.
Back to you. What is your wish this evening? Do you want me to just do a quick update on all of the district goals and things where, where we are, or defer, or, I'm, I'm happy to do that, just a quick little synopsis.
A quick synopsis would be in order, anything that's detailed or requires thought would...
And paper.
Mr. Heiner.
I just ask that, and I've talked to the superintendent about this, just have something sent to us in writing, compilation at, at your, when you get a chance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable with the rest of the committee? Okay, very good. Anything else?
All right, so we've talked about a strategic initiative, so we have, for people listening, we have four overarching goals, it's really encompass the vision of the school department in terms of its edu, its education. There's also a mission, but we have four overarching goals, and every year we have strategic initiatives around those particular goals. So under student achievement, we wanted to emphasize inquiry and experiential learning to promote student engagement and a deeper understanding of the curriculum. And there are different, at, at all levels, there are different initiatives going on. At the elementary level, we've, we're implementing the new Foss Science Curriculum in grades one through three, and the, this curriculum is aligned with the new generation science standards, which is a very experiential kind of learning. The high school has done a lot of work with expanding Makerspace, and in fact, just was rewarded a grant from the AEF to even expand that further, and we're actually looking for even more money to expand the type of, and the, Makerspace is a place, it's a sort of an ed term these days, it's a place really where you can make things, essentially, it's a Makerspace. And the, it's, it's, we have groups making various things for an engineering course, or it could even be for an art course or a math course, and they, we have a space in the school where that's happening. We've also expanded the internship program, and in fact, this, this is a program that I particularly want to see expanded even more in the years to come, because it gives kids an opportunity to go out and have the experience of working and doing a project in a setting where this is something they might wanna do later on in life. And I think it is, it's a, it's a great way for them to get that kind of experience, is what it's like to be in a work environment, to gain the confidence that gives you, and I know that Mr. Thielman, they, at his former school, they did this, and it was an extremely successful program. And in fact, we are working at the high school to, to secure more consulting services to make this better. I'm, I'm just gonna go through quick things. Increase the social emotional needs of students in the school, we have a planning grant out to AEF, and we heard, you heard about that before, and we just were awarded it. And so there's a lot of work going forward in, in creating a planning for cohesion in the district, but this year we have also had offered more responsive classroom training. With ECO is working to develop consistent protocols in schools, and we've also had a trauma course. Expand opportunities for secondary students to gain college and career readiness, well, that also goes to the internship program, but the thing is that in some ways, adopting park and going to this next generation of assessments has, has an effect in that they were developing, the common core standards are helping to shape curriculum in schools to develop the skills in very young children, in, in, in skills that they really do need, which would be in close reading, being able to do informational kind of writing, persuasion kind of writing, analysis, synthesis, doing more, we're trying to work toward more cross-curricular writing and reading. So these are all the skills early on that lead to that. What, the next goal has to do, the general overarching goal has to do with staff excellence and professional development, and Dr. Cheston is gonna talk a little bit about, we, we have been working, let's just say, educators always look at data, I mean, if you're a teacher, you're always looking data, the results, your tests, your, your exit, your exit, that is part of being a teacher, and you adjust to what you learn from that data. But we're, we've entered in the last few years into more formal processes and looking at both in terms of how it affects our curriculum, what happens to teaching and learning, and will you talk a little bit more about the initiatives that's going on specifically this year?
So Tuesday afternoons, once a month, there's a data time for teachers to look at data formally, and then there's also a common planning time. But I just wanted to give you just a taste of what, something that you might not think of as data, because often we think it's just numbers on a page, and that we consider looking at samples of student work, looking at data. So we would, I asked teachers, we, I have Timmy McBride, who I believe you met before, one of the literacy specialists, sat down with teachers and had them bring a low, medium or high, and high, at the beginning of the unit, a pre-writing assignment, that allowed them to see where the deficits were with their students, this, what they needed to work on, but also those students at the high end, and then they were able to revamp their unit plan based on that information. Halfway through, they again had students write, they came back together again to see if they were on the right track, and at the end, they looked to see if they had succeeded in what they were doing. So that's, looking at student work is a little bit different than the kind of data that you might have thought otherwise.
And moving on, the next strategic initiative is to develop a district strategy plan for teacher leadership, for teacher career growth. And again, this is not something that is new this year, we have done a lot around teacher leadership, both as mentors and curriculum mentoring, but we've, we've taken it to a new, a new level this year, and, and again, I'm gonna ask Dr. Cheston to talk about the PLN we're part of.
So we actually received a grant from AEF to plan how we would expand teacher leadership for this year, and it's our goal to go back to them at the end of the school year to ask for at least a one-year expansion grant for this. We're part of a PLN, a professional learning network with the state, where we are working with other districts, most particularly with Wakefield and Groton Dunstable, because those are districts that have coaching and also have other types of teacher leadership, lab site teacher leadership that we have. So the committee has already heard many times this year about the different work that we're doing in terms of the lab sites, in terms of the teachers running professional development, so we also have mini courses that, right now, that are being run by teachers, and over the summer, we'll be getting to train our own teachers to run the academies so that they can train other teacher leaders, and that will be how we will continue this without the grant funding, when the grant funding is discontinued.
All right, so a third strategic initiative was to improve ELLA teaching and learning. As you know, we've gone through the retail the last couple of years, this year administrators took the retail course for administrators, and they had to, the part of their experiential part of it was to observe their own teachers who have gone through the course, to see how they're using strategies in their classrooms, so that was the main focus, the main activity this year. So that was the main focus, the main activity this year. So we also have, as I mentioned earlier, the introduction of the new FOS curriculum for grades one through three. Next year, we'll be introducing it from, in grades four and five. And do you want to talk a little bit about the PD that we've had this year on that implementation?
In November, all the three grades that we're implementing this year had a whole day professional development that was sponsored by the FOS organization, the actual writers of the curriculum. And then twice during the school year on the Tuesday afternoons, each of the grades one through three had additional professional development to support them in the implementation of the program.
This is not a one-year introduction to it. This is going to take a while for teachers to feel really comfortable with it. We fully understand that. And until we were able even probably to get even the power standards of each one of these units organized, it's going to take summer work, more PD. So while this was an initiative, many of these are not one-years. And this is a good example of that. It's going to, it's going to take a while. And for a lot of teachers, science was not their content specialty when they went into teaching at the elementary level. So, you know, we need to continually provide more professional development and frankly, we need coaching in this area. And that might be something we talk about next year at budget time. Okay, so moving on to goal three with resources, infrastructure and for the educational environment. We've talked a little bit, quite a lot about this. It's developed a plan to address the anticipated enrollment growth. And then do everything possible to expedite the rebuilding of AHS. We're there. We will, we will be commencing that first module at the end of May. While we're doing some work in preparation, we will be on a very rigid timeline to get things done once that begins. Improve the maintenance, the third one is improve the maintenance, the island to public school buildings. I would have to say, and this is sort of universally said by the principals, they're much, they're much cleaner. I think it's really made a big difference to have a facilities department and with a way for to communicate where there's needs in a building. It has made, it has made a big difference for sure. But we could talk more about how the facilities department is working. I think so far, you know, it's a, it's a changes and adjustments. Certainly, the director and I meet fairly regularly to talk about things that come up.
If I may. Mr. Hayner.
It's been a long time since we've heard of the Early Childhood Center. Are things going well there as far as facility?
Yes, that has been a recent issue. Yes, but it's going well. And Ms. Foley will be glad to know that we have a better system, I think, in place going forward.
Good, thank you.
You know, dealing with a lot of the, you know, the maintenance needs down there. It's an old building.
No question.
And everybody's trying their very best to keep it as clean and as functional as possible.
Thank you.
One thing, what is happening with the preschool, by the way, we are going ahead and creating another classroom because we're going to need it. So that work is happening. Capital Planning Committee provided the money for it this summer. And of course, the debate was, well, is this something we should go forward with given where we are? But after a lot of discussion on that, we definitely are and it's going to be very needed. The fourth one here was to transform teaching and learning by expanding the district's use and integration of technology. And we've talked quite a bit about that this year, but just a quick synopsis on terms of the one-to-one, how that's going.
So we had one-to-one implementation in all of the sixth grade this year. We actually had 60 students who brought their own devices. We'll be expanding that to BYOD across the entire middle school. We also had eight teachers at the high school who piloted one-to-one in their own classrooms. And again, we'll be expanding BYOD across the entire high school next year. So next year is going to be exciting.
It will be exciting, but mention also the issue with our facing history group in terms of how they performed. We're going to have the students that did very well come and present to you, but in terms of their technological expertise.
Yeah, the students who were, as you heard the last time on the National History Day competition, have done an outstanding job in terms of using technology as part of their tools. So you'd be seeing that group come in.
Dr. Seuss.
Oh, I just have a question. I know at the middle school, BYOD is specific to iPads. At the high school level, is it device-specific or is it?
Actually, at the middle school, iPads are for the sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade. Students can bring either a Chromebook and iPad or a MacBook Pro or MacBook Air.
And that's true at the high school as well.
And that's the same thing, same options for the high school.
This year, sixth graders will, in seventh grade, be able to bring any device.
Any of those three devices.
Those three devices, okay, great, thanks.
And again, it has to do with battery life and ability to keep viruses out of the system.
Right.
Mr. Pierce.
What about the question I have is the BYOD for the students who are unable to have their own at home? Can they bring a school's back home to work on it or is it just simply?
No, we don't even, at the one-to-one at the middle school for sixth grade, we don't bring, we don't allow students to bring them home, any student to bring those home. Adds another layer of complexity. I think it is something we'll, that, we've had that discussion. As a matter of fact, I had the discussion with the administrators at the middle school this morning. So I think it's something that we'll be looking at down the line. There's a model for that. In Boston, they actually have a model where families that have a socioeconomic need are able to, it's called Tech Goes Home in Boston. And I know the director very well and it's something that we'll be looking at down the line.
Mr. Hayner.
Security both ways when a student brings their own device in. Does it have to be, go through a process before?
It goes through our network. They're accessing the internet through our network, so that has the same filters on it that our own machines do.
So nothing they bring can migrate into our system?
Well, you know, where there's a will, there's always a way, but that's why we chose those devices.
Okay, fine. I'm just more concerned with the ones that bring their, we control the ones that don't go home. I appreciate that. But the ones, if I bring my own machine in, and I understand that will, there's a way, but we have safeguards in place.
Yes, when they log on to the network, it immediately scans to make sure that they have the correct level of virus software on.
Before they can move into it, great.
Did you ever notice that when we try to log into things, we can't do it because it's blocked?
Some things. I can get in and out of the net. I can't do my.
There's certain things.
The net I can access, which.
Anything else, Dr. Bodie?
Just quickly, this will go much faster. This is goal four, which has to do with operations, communication and stakeholder engagement dashboard. We're going to be meeting on that next week. We have some preliminary work that we'll be sharing. Improve the communication by improving district and school websites. I think that that has been very successful this year. I haven't heard feedback from people, but I don't know if you have. But I, I know that even my own use of it, I find it much easier to navigate, to get information. And we have a lot, that's the thing, that people didn't understand, I think, in the old website. We have a lot of information. If you go and look at other district websites, you will not see the same depth of information that you can find in ours. But it wasn't as organized as well as it probably could have been.
One thing that I noticed today, Mr. Chair, was when I was trying to pull down policies under our policy tab, it could just be my device, but I didn't know if anyone else was having a problem. Once you go up to the home tabs, if you push down on one, you get the menu really quick and then it fades away. And you can't, you can't click on any of the sub-menu items.
It may be your device.
I had it at the beginning.
Mr. Hayner.
I had it at the beginning and my wife said, if you're patient, let it fully load itself. Once I let it fully load, give it a couple of seconds, then I was having the same dance with the tabs at the beginning. Once I let it fully load, everything's been working for me.
Oh, okay.
You and I got the similar system.
Lean on it.
All right, it's okay. All right, then I'll get rid of policies. And then the last was increase the diversity of the APS staff. And we certainly have worked on that. Mr. Spiegel's talked about it and we're going to be having a coffee coming up this month. So just a quick synopsis.
Just the other night, when the candidates, the school committee candidates, they were hit and happy to say, our current member, on cultural diversity, what the stance was. And that was a question that was presented in the public the other night.
Cultural competency.
So, and Dr. Ampe handled it very well.
Cultural competency.
Competency, thank you.
The cultural competency, I'm sorry.
Who is it?
That's okay. And that concludes the superintendent's report. We're now going to consent agenda. First, we need to pull off, out of the consent agenda, the organizational meeting because there's no proposed vote in the consent agenda. So the consent agenda is, I'm looking at electronically, I need the paper for the language. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Vote to approve warrant 16137 dated March 10th. Total warrant amount, $427,491.78. Vote to approve school committee regular draft minutes, March 10th, 2016. Vote to approve public hearing on school choice, May 12th, 2016 at 6:30 PM. Mr. Thielman.
I have to pull the minutes from the.
Pulling the minutes.
The 10th.
Wait, why are we not voting the organizational meeting?
Because there's no vote in the consent agenda. We need voting language, which is not listed. So.
Are we having one?
Yeah, we, we're going to have one anyway, but we would have to, what we'll do is a separate motion. You'll see why in a second. So all in favor of the two items in the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is passed. Now vote to approve the school committee regular draft minutes, March 10th. Motion by, oh, Mr..
Pierce.
Motion by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Hayner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Thielman, you abstain?
I do.
601, and that is approved. We need to set an organizational meeting and a vote would state when, the date and time of the organizational meeting, which was not listed in the consent agenda. So we can't vote a meeting where we don't establish a date and time. I would like to ask the committee to vote the, to make two votes here, make one vote with two things. One is to have the organizational meeting at 6:30 PM on the 14th, followed by a regular meeting starting at 6:45. So that, so there are two things that are happening here. We're voting to change the start time. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Can I say, so moved?
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
So not a 6:15?
No, 6:15.
Just a 6:30?
6:30, just like.
But these are two separate meetings and the organizational meeting must occur before the first regular meeting. So by scheduling the first regular meeting at 6:45, we can have the organizational meeting at 6:30.
Perfect.
Any further comments, discussions, questions?
The 14th of April.
14th of April, yes. Dr. Seuss.
Just a comment. We want to see the history students coming in and so we are going to push public comment to a little bit later. So if anyone's coming in for public comment, it'll be on the agenda, but that's sort of the plan.
We'll post the agenda.
Post the agenda and that will be clear. Right.
The chair is fully able to go and adjust the agendas as she sees fit. I look forward to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Subcommittee liaison reports. Before we do any other reports, let me just state that we went to the trivia bee on Sunday. And it was a wonderful thing. We got knocked out of the first swarm. We did not make the pesticide run. We didn't know who was running around without a head. The Harry Potter. I went home, Reika said, of course, it's so-and-so and, you know, we should get her on the team next year. However, we did win best costume.
All right.
Which is testimony, which is testimony to our firm, solid commitment in upholding everything to do with the open meeting law because we did not deliberate outside of the meeting.
And we had similar colors. We had yellows and reds.
We were funky and eclectic and cool and I wore a Hanshin Tigers hoppy coat.
It wasn't, it wasn't a pity vote, was it?
It might have been. It might have been, yes. I think so.
But, you know, the thing is, is it was fun and I think that we looked like we were having fun.
That's it.
Judson and a fez is wonderful.
Whoa, that's an image I'll take.
You've seen the pictures, they're on Facebook. And in the paper.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
You're immortal.
Oh, God.
Take us your career.
Your last meeting of the school committee, you're honored for looking silly.
Yes.
This will help your thespian career. Okay, going down the list of everybody, policies and procedures, you're the all-star tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Karen, thank you so much for all your work you've done for us and for policies and procedures in particular. Just making my last meeting with all these on the list go so well, so thank you very much. We have a few for second read tonight. The first is on the ACABE, which is just deleting the old people who are no longer and updating the MCAD and EEOC places that they are now. So I put ACABE as a motion on the table to approve.
Second.
With those changes. Okay, move by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Hayner. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote.
Okay, the next is the smoking at school premises, ADC. We made the following, when we met as a subcommittee on Monday, we added use of any tobacco products or any smoking/vaping materials. And the other correction, no, that was the only, that was the only small edit we made on Monday night. So with that, I make a motion to approve ADC tonight.
Second.
Move by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Hayner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Continue.
Okay. Concerning school councils, file BDFA. You'll see the changes that are highlighted and underlined. We, one thing that didn't make it into the second read, and that's my fault, is to add, and we talked about this Monday, a sentence that a term of a school council member is from October 1st to September 30th. And that gets us around the problem that we're having now. The situation now is that the school improvement plans are done in June and more happens over the summer. And then they come back and they're a new unit and they haven't had any input into what they're voting on. Or, right, is that essentially the problem?
Plus elections.
And the election. So we're moving, we're asking that the election be done in October and.
By October 4th.
By October 1st.
Right.
But that the term be.
September.
10/1 to 9/30.
That's the issue.
Okay, motion by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Hayner. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Are you asking us to approve this because I thought you wanted to add the term in or something?
Yeah, that didn't make it in.
So what do you, do you want to add it now or are we, do you want to fix it and we'll send it for second read next meeting?
I think that we discussed this at the last meeting so that we, all this is, is providing language consistent with our intent. If people think this is radically new or worth holding over, we can do that, but I'm not seeing it as that big a change.
There's just, there's a sentence missing.
It's, yeah, it's that missing sentence that I'm going to add in the second paragraph.
And you're going to fix the in September, no later than October 15th?
Correct.
Yeah.
No later than October 1st.
Okay.
Right, no, yeah.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion, comments, questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanim, abstain, unanimous vote.
Okay, moving on to.
EEA.
EEA.
EEA, this has been sent to our town council.
Eagle Council.
We haven't, I haven't yet heard back from them, so I can't.
Okay.
Put this on the table for us.
Next one, GCB?
Yeah, next one, the GCB. We did get a draft from our council with some new language. We had some real discussion on this and we need to have a little bit more.
Stuff in here, yeah.
So I would ask that this be pushed to the next policies.
Ignore it.
Yep, for now. So GCB and the GCBA ones, we're going to hold off on. The email distribution list policy, file IJNDD. We basically, the new changes are we crossed out the first sentence, which isn't our technology mission in the first place. And we added postings to official school distribution lists will be limited to faculty and staff. Motion to approve IJNDD. to faculty and staff. Motion to approve IJNDD.
Motion to approve, second by Mr. Heiner. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's adopted.
And entrance age, file JEB, adding the preamble language that the Arlington schools believe a strict cutoff date for the start of kindergarten, first grade benefit the educational and social emotional needs of the student throughout his or her K through 12 years. And then it would be considerable discussion has been conducted on the issue of school readiness. For this reason, at this time, the APS will not entertain petitions to accelerate the start date for a student based on age. So we're cutting out the language, talking about the early childhood longitudinal study. It created a lot more...
Verbiage than we needed.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Heiner. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. Unanimous vote.
A few more. We're deleting, we're recommending to delete and remove file JICG on Arlington High School Policy and Tobacco, because it's encompassed on the one that we revised a few moments ago, so.
Motion by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Heiner. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous vote.
File JKAA on policy on restraint of students. We have the policy that was vetted by Attorney Nancy Nevels and our special education director. This complies with the current law. This one, our old one was last updated four years ago. And this just basically complies with the new law, and we would recommend that if he passed tonight. That's my motion.
Motion by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Heiner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. Unanimous vote.
Okay, same thing as the previous smoking policy that we deleted. We're recommending to remove and delete file KJC, smoking on school premises at public functions, no smoking policy.
Move by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Heiner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. Unanimous vote.
Okay, and finally, on file KI, visitors to the school. We're saying during the school day, no persons except parents or guardians of children. Those appointed for the purpose of the committee or those officially connected with the school shall be allowed in the schools unless permission is given by the superintendent or his or her designee. A log shall be maintained in each school office to record name, who's visiting, purpose of visit, and time. New language, visitors shall check in as dictated in each school's entry's procedures, not sign in. So with that change, I recommend that we pass KI.
Motion by Mr. Pierce, second by Mr. Heiner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. Unanimous vote.
And we have, hopefully I've given out to my fellow members, the jumping off point that Attorney Bryant did when Mr. Thielman was chair of this subcommittee in January of 2014. Some of these are still threes and fours that could be updated and reviewed for this coming year. And I wish you all the best of luck on that.
Thank you. Dr. Seuss.
I was just wondering if we wanted to bring to the full committee this whole question that we debated back and forth about school committees, authority over principal salaries. We sort of batted that back and forth, or if we, or you, or if you feel that it should stay at subcommittee level at this point.
I think, from what I, I've had discussions, I think it would be great to have Attorney Bryant give us another read through her philosophy based on our discussion before we bring it to the table, because I think it would be useful for all of us to have her take on what we were talking about on Monday night.
Mr. Thielman.
So, for the sake of clarity, the first readings, GCB, GCBA, GCBB, employment of principals being one of, are they, so is this, this is first reading, and it's gonna come for a second? No, it's not. So these really aren't first readings?
Took them off.
Just drafts?
Yeah.
Okay, so the new committee's really gotta restart the whole process. Okay, so we're really, haven't had a first reading yet on any of these. So this is not coming up for a second reading in April?
Yeah, we said ignore this.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to make, well, because it says first reading.
I don't know what it says, but the action was, is we're ignoring them. We didn't bring them through first reading. Dr. Allison Ampe.
The other thing we did with that list that we have of the policies, we've asked the administration either via Ms. Fitzgerald or someone else, I forget who, to create a spreadsheet of the same information, but this way we can sort it, we can update it, and we can sort it which policies need updating first.
Which are oldest.
Yeah, well, oldest, or most in need of updating. You know, right now, it's this pages-long thing, and it's hard to look at and get a picture of, well, this one, anyway.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Excellent.
And I think, it's important also to note that at all times, all district policies are intended to be read in conjunction with the applicable laws, so that there's any discrepancy whatsoever to district policies and applicable laws, such laws will take precedence. And we should always note that when we're updating or revising or changing these.
When we become aware of a change in law, we attempt to revise the policy so it aligns. We may not always catch it, because the rascals up on Beacon Hill do peculiar things at times. But that's okay. Mr. Heiner.
We get nice updates from MASC. They just gave us all one, I don't know if you've got it yet, on the new drug, which I thought was very intensive. It was the only one on this thing. We also get occasional updates from different councils of changes, and some of them say, you gotta work on this right away.
Right.
And I'm sure Dr. Bodie gets them probably even ahead of us, so.
Yeah, there are a lot of sources for notification and these things, but every once in a while, something gets attached, is an outside section of the budget, and all of a sudden, hello. So that completes your work as chair of the Policies and Procedures Committee. You've done a great job.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Very much, Mr. Chair.
Budget Subcommittee, Kersey Allison Ampe.
We have a budget. We are going to send out a doodle to meet next week to look over the budget book before it goes to town, before it goes to the printer to go to town meeting.
Excellent. The question?
Can you give us an update on the BRTF, for those of us who didn't go?
Do you want, yeah?
Budget Revenue Task Force, yeah.
So, it met on Monday. The bulk of the discussion centered around timing of debt exclusions, and various people's ideas of timing of debt exclusions. And it kind of pinged between, well, could we do it in June, and what are the pluses and minuses of June? Could we do it in the fall? What are the pluses and minuses of the fall? And there really wasn't consensus about what the best thing was. And then there was also, it was pointed out that Minuteman has a really high likelihood, because they can actually call a debt exclusion, I mean, they can call...
A referendum.
A referendum to approve the reconstruction and therefore incur the debt if any of the towns vote no as we go forward on the current plan. And they, when was it, June 24th, I think?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay.
Eighteenth, June 18th.
Yeah, so they, and the problem is that not only can they call that, but their election has very different rules that are specified by law than our elections do. So we can't even anticipate this coming and time our question to do with it, because that would come under our election. So you would have this weird thing where the Minuteman could be for eight hours during the day. Ours has to be for 12 hours. And so some of the time, you get one ballot, some of the time, you get two ballots. And it's just logistically, yeah, yeah, exactly. It's like crazy. So, anyone else who was there?
Yeah, I mean, the law for the Minuteman vote is they can be no less than four and no more than eight hours in terms of the length of the polling time. And my sense is, listening to the discussion, that June would have sort of laid out as a consensus time, except that the Minuteman vote just sort of gets in the way. Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, so my sense is that the Minuteman is what's putting, you know, making everything really difficult. If Minuteman weren't there, the whole decision would be easier. But I had the pleasure of sitting through the selectmen's meeting that night for many hours, and there they voted to send this discussion to the long-range planning committee. So, I mean, the selectmen ultimately make the decision about when we have a debt exclusion, and they've decided they want to talk about it there first.
The other thing was, Budget Revenue Task Force was supposed to meet again in two weeks. That was, except they weren't sure what date would work, and so that's supposed to be coming now as a doodle, too. So there should be another one coming very soon.
Okay, so there were no decisions made at this BRTF?
No.
Nothing came out of it, okay.
Budget Facility, Cindy Starks.
Nothing to report.
District Accountability, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Jeff Thielman.
I report.
Community Relations, Jennifer Seuss.
We have a meeting next week. We'll hopefully look at some dashboard stuff. We'll talk about community outreach, about the decisions, that we won't make any decisions yet, but about the decisions on the Gibbs, if that turns out to be the case. And what else are we discussing? Oh, and the superintendent had graciously agreed to do at least one coffee. That's fairly open-ended, where parents can come, where we can focus on what's going on in our schools with maybe just a very short presentation, but sort of open-ended for conversation. And so hopefully we'll finalize that date then, yeah.
Okay. Executive Session Minute Review Subcommittee, I guess we're gonna be talking...
We're gonna be discussing that in executive session tonight, for the purpose of approving and releasing.
Yes. Warrant Committee, everybody got paid?
Yes.
School Enrollment Task Force, I think we've talked that out.
Be that a thing next week.
School Liaisons, anyone with a school liaison report? Dr. Seuss?
Oh, I went to the town-wide PTO meeting and just told them about the mess that is our upcoming debt exclusion vote, and all the conversations that's going on. They were very interested in that, so that's, that was our focus.
Okay, that brings us down to the executive session. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive, to review executive session, to review executive session minutes for approval and release for the following dates. September 27th, 2012, October 11th, 2012, October 25th, 2012, November 5th, 2012, November 27th, 2012, December 6th, 2012, December 20th, 2012. Following dates in 2013, January 10th, January 24th, February 14th, March 14th, March 28th, April 11th, April 25th, May 9th, May 23rd, September 12th, September 26th, October 24th, November 21st, February 14th, 2014. The remaining dates in 2014 are March 13th, March 27th, June 12th, October 23rd, and November 13th. Moved by Mr. Heiner, yeah?
I just, we will be, have to come out and vote these again.
We can vote them at the next meeting as well, so we don't have to keep the TV...
I have no problem here.
Yeah. Move by Mr. Heiner, second by Mr. Pierce. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Heiner, Mr. Pierce, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Aye, but you didn't...
We're not doing any of the other stuff. All we're doing is going to review minutes.
Okay.
So that's the notice. Dr. Allison Ampe votes.
Yes.
Ms. Starks, Mr. Thielman.
Aye.
Dr. Seuss.
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative for an executive session. We will not be returning. Thank you.